Okay, on our agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, we have department reports from the facilities manager, water and sewer, Department of Public Works, town administrators' report, we have a few action items, citation and recognition appointment, and acceptance of a donation, Conservation Commission requesting our support, we have all business, new business, excuse me, correspondence, approval of minutes of October 7th, 2019. However, we're going to hold those until we do a little housekeeping on them, okay? Yes. Then we have citizens forum and adjournment, public service announcements, Priscilla?
No.
Chase?
No.
Mike?
Mary?
No.
I just have a couple. The bonfire for tomorrow evening has been canceled, also the Halloween parade on Halloween evening that starts at the town hall and goes around, and activities on the common has also been canceled because we are still high-risk on the triple E.
But trick-or-treating is at your...
Yeah, trick-or-treating is at your own discretion, that's a private event, it's only on public lands that we have restricted, town lands that we've restricted activities. Okay, Robin?
Good evening.
Good evening, Robin.
Hi. So I submitted my first department update for the Facilities Department, it's only been since July, so thank you for letting me join you, and we don't, we've had a busy couple of months, the custodians and I have been running around working on fall maintenance for the elevators and the heating systems in the town buildings. I've also interviewed and offered a position to a new custodian, would be our third custodian part-time, we're waiting to hear back on that, acceptance of the position and the paperwork for that, so hopefully that will come through and we can get a little bit more accomplished. We've also been focusing on working on capital projects, the DPW roof for the office area has been completed since, in the last two months, and I've been assisting Becky, the library director, with preparation for her library renovation over the next couple of weeks, we've been working on furniture, moving the things back and forth, DPW has also been assisting with some, some moving of objects, so that's been a very busy project over there. Right now, I want to also point out, for recreation, we have an invitation for bid out for the Little League field lighting project, hopefully we get bids opened on November 8th, and can award that project to be probably built in the spring as soon as they can. And the other big project that I've been focused on the last couple of months has been the Green Communities projects, that was a total of lighting, for LED lighting in four of the town buildings, town hall, center office, the library, and DPW, that should be complete within the next couple of weeks for all these four buildings, and we've also completed a weatherization project at the public safety complex. It's been quite a busy couple of months.
I know, well, thank you for the written report, I don't recall ever getting one before, so it's very helpful.
Great.
Okay, questions from the board or comments? Any problems we can help you with?
No.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Again, thanks for the report.
Great, have a good evening.
You too. Okay, water and sewer, Shane Moody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Shane.
I submitted my operation reports for the months of September and August, and I'll start with any questions you might have on those.
Okay, anyone have a question or a comment on August?
Yeah, on septicage, notice we've got 92% out-of-town septicage and for, oh, that was not August, I'm sorry, that was September. I'm looking at them back in opposite order, how about August? What was the percentage of out-of-town septicage, and how are we doing with zinc?
So the majority of your septicages coming from out-of-town, and we're making the zinc limit, the sulfide we're using is working, playing with different strengths to try and save money by buying in bulk, but as of right now, we're making permit.
Okay, well, that's, that's the goal, is to make the permit. If we, if we can stabilize some of the costs with out-of-town septicage in the process, then it's less cost to our ratepayers, so.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions on August? September?
Okay, we did the PFOS testing for the water system, and the results are back in, we did two rounds on wells 1, 3, and 5, and one round on the well 4 treatment plant, there was a small hit on the first round on one of the wells, but it was way under the MCL and the proposed MCL, the MCL right now is 80 pots per trillion, the proposed is going to be 20 pots per trillion, and the one little hit we had was four pots per trillion, but the combined water didn't have any, on the second round of testing, there were no hits at all, so when we got the results back from DEP, I reached out to them to see if there was going to be any more retesting required, the answer I received is none voluntary, voluntarily right now, so we won't be doing any of that, the new samples scheduled to come out at the beginning of next year, and we'll just have to wait and see if we're required to do more, but it's a really good thing that we don't have that, because I've talked to other communities and other operators who do have it, and it's really expensive to treat and get rid of, so as of right now, it seems we're in good standing. Other testing that we've been doing too with the EPA is the UCMR floor testing, which is testing the EPA has asked us to do, I've only seen three results, and we're well under the detection limits on those too, non-detects, so that's good too, we just finished taking the last samples this week, so when I come back in December, I'll be able to give you an update on whether we've passed everything or not, but so far, so good. We did another round of water readings and sent out bills, those have been out, we're done flushing on the west side of town, we'll finish up the east side of town in the next week or two, and we started winterizing public fire hydrants on the west side of town, and I expect to have that done in the next couple of weeks. Besides that, it's been business as usual, maintenance and such things, and the plants are running well, and that's pretty much all I have for you this evening.
How's the hydrant situation, are they all working?
We had two, we fixed one today, we actually fixed two today, we found another one that's not working properly, we'll pull that apart tomorrow and then probably order pots and fix that too, but as of, to my knowledge, that's the only one that's out of service as of right now.
Okay, have you gotten many calls on discoloration of water because of the flushing?
No, I think one of the things is, we've been flushing the system so long, and I believe we flush it the right way, that we get, I get no complaints at all, so no, I haven't had any, and even when we have water main breaks, you know, our biggest complaint is loss of water, if you're not flushing right, you're going to get complaints of discoloration all over town, we don't have that problem, and I think it's just because our flushing program is very evil.
Okay, questions, comments from the board? Any other problems?
Nope, unless we say it that way.
I know, we do too, well, thank you, Shane.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. Okay, Public Works, Butch?
We have August and September's reports, there's nothing really out of the ordinary except we were working Clark Road most of August and September, but it's now complete, everything else is mowing, ditching, all the usual stuff, some reports, any questions on either reports?
Any questions? Comments?
I have some additional stuff to...
Yeah, they're all looking like they...
Yeah.
Yeah, a comment that I've made before is the, you know, the amount of professional development in the past has been, you know, like in, in the month of August, there was zero man-hours and then, or zero man-days, and then in September, there was two man-days for professional development, and I just would like to encourage that, you know, Public Works is an area that there's a lot changing these days, and I just, you know, I wanted to encourage you, there's a lot of programs that like Bay State Roads has and stuff like that, and, you know, maybe, I tried to encourage the prior director as well as yourself to make sure the guys get trained and get their professional development in.
Well, you'll see that on the next month's report, because the entire crew went to the snow and ice school, all 12 of us, even Mark and myself attended, we actually hosted it here, and we had several other towns with us, there was probably 35 of us at the Public Safety Committee, so they've all had their snow and ice training, and I have six people scheduled for the truck calibration class in early November, so we'll be, we'll be up to speed with our snow and ice operations this year, and I entirely agree with you.
Yeah, you know, things like the calibration, calibrating the spreaders for, can save the town a ton of money.
Oh, it will, it will, it's going to be good.
It can, it can be really effective, so.
And everybody's on board, everybody's very excited about it, which I was glad to see, and I guess they tried to do a little bit on their own last year, but now they're going to have what they need to get it done right.
That's good.
And other than that, we have a couple Beaver things we took care of, we did the Cooper Road, the large one, we knocked that down about a foot, and we have a pond level, or what they call it, and with Becky's permission, we're going to hopefully knock that down, maybe another foot, after we see what the effects of the first foot are, but it's looking better now, it looks a little less ominous.
Yeah.
Which is good, and there's another one just up the street from there, and we did that one also, and that one's encroaching on a house in a barn nearby, and also the roadway, so that one's all set, that one leveled down to where it's going to stay, so that one won't get any, any larger, so that's good. And the only other thing was the paving, we finished the paving about two hours ago, and we're done for this year, we have a few driveways to go back and match, and some, maybe some lawns to fix up, and some piles to pick up, but other than that, we're done with the paving, and it came out real well, and that's good, so now we can just focus on snow and ice, unfortunately.
Yeah, don't say that, no, it does look real...
Was Farquhar Road one of the ones that you...
Yes, we finished that today, we went all, we only went down to Blueberry Lane because we have some drainage just past that, and, but we got that, much of it done, so that's good, that was a real bad section, then we did Olive Willard, which was real bad, and then we did Olive Wallace and Shepherd, and down to Westville.
Awesome.
We do have that little lane.
So you didn't dig up the rest of Farquhar, I mean, because there's, the road races...
No, it's all set, it's all we paved, it's ready to go, yeah, the race will be good, at least the last half mile.
After they get up the incline.
All right, awesome, thank you.
Priscilla?
Yeah, thank you for posting your updates on Facebook, where you're going to be and when, and the times, it's very helpful to know when to get out of the road so that you can get out without impacting anybody.
I was a little leery about doing it, but it was pretty positive.
It's a great thing, yeah, it's great, thank you so much for that.
Not negative, which was good.
If people get facts, it's nice.
Yeah, no, they...
If you hadn't put anything up, there would have been a lot of strange things.
We never had it before, that's why it's really nice to know.
Is that the community page I referred to? I would love, so, but it's not our government town.
No.
I would like, I've said this before, I would like a Sturbridge Facebook page.
There was an unofficial one, which we have taken over, so we're in the process of changing the permissions and the administration over to the town, so in the next few weeks, we'll have a town one up.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Not that that one's not helpful.
Is that the Sturbridge community one?
No.
No, it's separate.
I'll get questions...
There was one that said the unofficial one of the town of Sturbridge, and we took over that one.
I actually posted on, we had, it is up and running, the town one, but it's not very well used, known about yet, so I posted there and on the website, but I got much more interaction on the community.
On the community.
That one's established, but sometimes they'll get questions from residents about something that's on that, I'm not on Facebook, and I'll say, well, it could or could not be accurate, because that's not a town-sponsored Facebook page.
Right.
The town didn't put out the information.
Well, I try, I tried to tell them tonight to, if you have questions, email me, not, I really don't want to air everything out on the Facebook page.
Right.
So just email me privately, and we'll discuss whatever it is you need to discuss.
Okay, anything else?
That's good.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, town administrators' report.
Yes, thank you, you have a letter or a memo from the schools about their upcoming budget process, and they're seeking a liaison, so I think that can be something you all decide, if you do that, I don't know when to do that, but...
Yeah, they're, they'll review their budgets in January.
Okay, a couple of the members are going on a tour next Wednesday of the 253 facility, so we're going to leave her about 8:30. The trick-or-treating again is on, up to everybody's individual preferences, there's a 5K run, Home of the Brave, on November 16th, you can register online or the day of the event, if you go online to the recreation page on the town's website, you can get information on registration on Nov...
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
If you want to get a T-shirt, they're going to be really sharp, Home of the Brave, you do need to register by Friday, there will be some extras to buy on the day of the event, but you're only guaranteed a T-shirt if you register online by this Friday.
And it's $20?
It's $20, on day of the event, it will move to 25.
Okay. And as Robin said, the library's going to be under renovation for a few weeks, November 21st, they're going to have an open house to show the, the results of the renovation, so we'll make sure we get that published in the media. I think that's all I have.
Okay, action items, Becky, I assume that's why you're here, we'll take you out of order so you can leave, okay, she's actually E.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know if everyone had a chance to read the memo that I submitted?
Yes.
Okay, so this, I, as outlined in here, the Conservation Commission issued an enforcement order in June for this, this actually started, we were first notified of this violation in May, so in early May, we were notified that a bobcat was observed with a hydraulic hammer, and then it was heard down in the area from an adjacent property, so we received a report in the office, and I contacted 508 International, we had been working with them the previous year for something else that happened out there, we set up a site visit within a few days, I went out there with the chair of the Conservation Commission, and we went down to that area, we did observe what appeared to be a new bridge and trails constructed within a wetland and within the buffer zone, so at that time, you know, the representatives from 508 International had said that they didn't believe they were working in Sturbridge, and we had kind of had a discussion with them and some correspondence, and written correspondence with them, that based off the information available, we used the mass GIS layers, the assessor's maps, that portion of the property was in Sturbridge, so they said that they could present a plan showing that they weren't working within our town, the chair agreed at that time to give them some time to present that plan, because if we weren't in Sturbridge, then it wasn't going to be an issue, we did say that what they had done would be a violation, because there was no filing for that, so they were given some time to present a plan, they came to our following meeting in May, they asked for a little bit more time to present that plan, which the commission allowed them to come back to our June meeting with that plan, they did not come back to the June meeting, and at that meeting, about a month had lapsed, the commission decided to issue the enforcement order for those unpermitted activities which were done in violation, so we issued the enforcement order in June, enforcement orders have a 60-day appeal period where someone can appeal that decision, no appeal was given, we did have them, they did come back in, they asked, at that time, they had said that they believed that, you know, they didn't need, they weren't in violation, that the bridge was existing, and they only made some repairs to it, et cetera, so they asked if they could have a little more time to submit a request for determination of applicability filing, which the commission agreed to, they did not submit that at the timeframe discussed, and then around that time, I started discussing this with town council to see what steps we would be taking to move forward, and as the appeal period was approaching, they recommended that we issue them a letter, letting them know that the appeal period was ending, and to give them a little more time, another week or so, and we gave them a set date to either comply with it, which we didn't have any correspondence on that, so we've been working with town council to move forward with the appropriate actions for that, so the commission's looking for your support with moving forward with that.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, does somebody, oh, Mike?
I just, is the course of action for civil violation, or is it for enforcement under the Wetlands Act as a...
It's for enforcement under Wetlands Protection Act in the local bylaw, so it's, it is civil at this point, so.
Okay.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion for the Board of Selectmen, given their support in pursuing this matter?
So moved.
Is there...
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor, okay, five to nothing. Thank you very much. Becky, thank you for coming in.
Very organized and...
Thank you for keeping us informed as well.
Keep us posted.
Well, thank you.
Okay, let's see, we have a few action items, the first one is citation and recognition of San Vo of Kaizen Sushi Bar, he's been nominated by the Immigrant Learning Center for 2019 Barry Portnoy Immigration Entrepreneur Award, per the nomination quoted from it, San Vo's mother ran a restaurant in their native Vietnam, after serving in the US Army, he followed in her example, in her example, and opened his first restaurant, Kaizen Sushi Bar and Grill in Sturbridge in 2007, his second restaurant, Po Shure, opened in Shrewsbury in 2014, and a third restaurant, Cashew Raymond Azakeya, is planned for Franklin Street in downtown Worcester, Vo prides himself on being a life coach and mentor to his employees, encouraging both their professional and personal growth, he is one of five recipients of the Worcester Business Journal 2019 Business Leaders of the Year Award, so we do have a citation, which reads, "In recognition of San Vo of Kaizen Sushi Bar and Grill, San has shown exceptional dedication, professionalism, and leadership to his business and employees with energy and enthusiasm, San has made an outstanding contribution to the town of Sturbridge and the Massachusetts economic well-being, congratulations, San, on receiving this prestigious citation." The year, can't find it right now, but there is a reception...
Yes.
...in Cambridge, Tuesday, October 29th, at 6:00 PM, if anyone is interested in going, okay, okay, is there a motion then to sign the citation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, all in favor? Okay.
Certainly a popular restaurant in our town. Always a lack of parking there. Am I right with the bad day parking?
Yeah, that was coming.
Yeah.
It's always nice to see entrepreneur being successful, and, you know, immigrants have made this country great.
That's right, we're all products of immigration too, okay, Sam, is that the citation?
Yes.
Okay.
So we still need Mary Dowling to sign it, none of that, it's all set.
Okay, next, we have a request to appoint Richard Paradise to the Sturbridge Trails Committee with a term expiring in June, June 30th, 2022, Richard is a current associate member, now, how many associates and how many...
Right.
...regular do we have?
Yeah, I think, I'd have to look it up, I asked Tom for that information, I can get it to you, but there's no bylaw that creates the Trails Committee, it's just kind of by different motions through the years of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I know, I didn't, it's not listed anywhere, so I didn't...
Right, so Tom dug up some stuff for me, I'll get it to you, I just wanted to make sure that there was such a thing as an associate member, and there was such a thing as a, you know, voting member.
There is.
So, and they did have a voting member vacancy, I think the number's five.
Yeah, that's usually the number, yeah, that sounds good. Okay, does somebody want to make...
I'd like a motion to concur with the appointment of Richard Paradise as a full-voting member of the Sturbridge Trails Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2022.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, five to nothing, okay, then there's a vote we need to accept, $2,000 donation from Country Bank to the Sturbridge Senior Center, they had written a letter to whom it may concern, "Thank you for all you and your staff do for the local seniors every day, the programs and camaraderie that you share are so valuable and vital, vitally important to those you serve, we realize that each year it becomes more difficult to maintain this level of commitment with the tightening of local budgets, therefore, we are delighted to continue our annual support of the senior centers in our market area, enclosed is our donation in the amount of $2,000, these funds may be used for your center without restriction to help out with some of the items that are sure to be on your checklist." Okay, is there a motion to accept the donation?
Oh, I'll make a motion to accept the $2,000 donation from Country Bank for the Sturbridge Senior Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, five to nothing.
And I'll, I'll give you my comments on the next one.
Yeah, that's what I thought, number, number D, letter D, Sturbridge Metalurgical.
Okay, at your last meeting, you accepted a letter of intent to issue tax abatements, and they went through a process, we met this morning with the owner, he contacted us later today, asking for some time extension, they're still working on pricing of some different aspects of the project, and that would have an impact on the level of abatement, so he's asked to postpone a conversation with the board until November 4th, but overall, it's a very positive project, I think Selectmen woman, Jemis, can, you know, go over that.
Absolutely, it went very well.
Yeah, a good group, so...
I'd like the consensus of the board to, to ask the town administrator to convey the board's continuing support of this, of this project, and then...
Well, he can, I mean, he's working with them, so that's the support.
Yeah, I know, but I, I just, we voted last time to support, I just, you know, I feel like...
Okay, so your formal motion then is to continue working?
Continue the, to let them know that we continue to support.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, five to nothing.
I will let him know that we support the project and look forward to the 4th of November.
Yes, okay, old business, Priscilla?
I was just curious, when are we going to discuss locations for the marijuana shops?
I have draft host community agreements for all three facilities, I got them from the attorney last week, I got a chance to do a first run-through them before I went to ICMA, tomorrow is my day to go through them again, get comments back to the attorney, and then clean... clean them up and get them to the three proposed vendors and begin the actual face-to-face negotiations on the, you know, the details. Hopefully in November, you'll have three host community agreements to review and then pick two or three or none, depending upon how you feel about what's been proposed by the vendors.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else, Priscilla? Chase, old? Mike, old?
No.
Mary, old?
No.
And I have no old. New, Priscilla?
I have one question that was asked of me, and I didn't have an answer. On our calendar on our website, we list all the meetings, but evidently we don't list the school committee meetings. And I never knew this until it was brought to my attention. And in asking around, I'm told that as long as the school's posted on theirs, it's up to the town if they want to post it. But if a resident wants to go to a school committee meeting, I'm not sure how many of them would know to do both, to check both. Is there a way then we can put it on ours as we put all the other meetings? It used to be on there. I do know that. So when I was told it wasn't, I did go check, and it wasn't on. I do remember it being on, though, so can we put it back?
We certainly can. The... What you'll run into is because it happens universally when you're trying to run two calendars, if the Board of Ed changes a meeting and doesn't let us know, we're still going to have the old thing on the calendar, right? So it would be great to sync them up somehow. If one changed one, it would change them both. I don't know if we can do it. But we can certainly post their meetings, but unless there's down-to-the-minute communication when they alter one, we're going to have an incorrect calendar.
It's rare, yeah. It's rare that they alter it. I do know that. It's very rare that they cancel them or alter them. But just in general, I guess... Because I didn't have an answer to the resident when I was asked. I did check, and that resident was correct. It wasn't on.
No, we... No, we don't run the school events, and I don't know if they've run the town events on theirs.
Right. But since a public meeting like that...
I mean, even...
They have a right to...
Like, even if generally, you know, we wouldn't have to put their agenda.
Right.
Even because the Burgess usually meets the first Thursday.
Fantastic. It meets the third Tuesday.
Yeah. So, you know, if we put something on like that...
They usually, in the beginning of the year, send out a memo to all their committee members of the dates of their meetings. I think if we just ran that and if it changed, it changed. But I think if at least we ran that, it might help the resident.
Actually, it will be happy to put their standing meetings on, but if they change them, we're not going to catch a change.
And I think that's fair. I think that's very fair, but at least people will have a chance to see it.
How about putting their standard meetings on and then if... And right next to it, have a click link to their website, their calendar?
If we could do that, that'd be better.
Could link to their calendar if people wanted an update.
Yep. Or an agenda even.
Yep.
They could get it that way, yeah.
I'll see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
New? Mike?
Nothing new.
Mary?
No.
And I have nothing new. Correspondence? Mike?
What did we have here?